And welcome to the council workshop Thursday, the 30th of October 2025. We're talking user fees and charges today. In terms of health and safety of the alarm sounds, please make your way to the assembly point down Devonport Road towards the Strand. Please be aware this meeting is being live streamed on YouTube and will be publicly available. Members, could you please speak clearly and please make sure your mobile phones are turned off? We have an apology from How Tapu Baker. And I don't think we've got to do a, we don't have to do a resolution for that, do we? And now we'll get straight into business and hand over to Radley. I think we're talking trade waste or Wally, you're going to lead it, are you?
Good at that. Yeah, Radley's been delayed, so I'll jump in and place, so afraid you got me again. So trade waste is the liquid waste from commercial and industrial premises discharged into our wastewater network. And there are obviously contaminants from industrial and commercial type processes that are different to the residential waste, and some of them can be stronger than normal domestic waste, and some of them can also have harmful contaminants. And some of the things that we're concerned about that may damage a wastewater network, obviously, is pH, you know, acids and things like that, heavy metals from electroplaters and those kind of activities, and oils, fats and greases from restaurants and food processing plants. Also, things like high sugar content, milks, those kind of liquids that are discharged have a very, very high strength, much stronger than a domestic sewerage. So we require, we require trade waste premises to apply for a trade waste permit, and then we manage that activity with them around what is discharged to our wastewater network. And we're looking at protecting both the treatment plants and the wastewater network itself, so the treatment plant, sorry, the pumps and pipelines. So the cost, all that we do is cost recovery, so there is absolutely no profit, I can promise you that. And the costs are made up of processing the applications and renewals, conducting inspections, monitoring the, the, so we take samples from the larger industries, we take samples regularly, they're prorated over 24 hours, and then we measure them for strengths, suspended solids, COD and other contaminants, to make sure that they're within the parameters of their consent, oh, sorry, of their permit. And the other thing is, we want them to pay for their fair share of consumption of the network above what a domestic property would have. That's pretty much it. It also drives them into cleaner production. And just remember, these commercial entities pay at both ends, they pay for the water they take in, and then they pay for the wastewater above domestic strength that they discharge. So there really is a driver for them to consider best practice around clean production. So we're currently reviewing our trade waste bylaw, and it's, it's a requirement that is done every 10 years, and it's, it's due for renewal. And the authority for making a bylaw resides with council, even under the new Water Services Act. So the bylaw still resides with council, even though it may be monitored and enforced through the water organisation, if, if that comes to pass. So really, again, it's just, I want to emphasise it as cost recovery only, and it's, we want our local industry to have good practices around their production. And, yeah. Sorry, question? Yep.
So, understanding, do we have metres on these premises? How do we actually?
So we have metres, we have water metres, and we, a lot of them now are on smart metres, so that we have real time measurement of what their, their use of water is. And then we also put flow gauges in place, monitoring, and we monitor for usually a week or more at a time, and determine, you know, the amount of flows that are going down the sewer, because sometimes a lot of the water that's taken in is used in production and other things, especially if you're producing ice and those kind of things. So, yeah, so we want to get the right balance. And then over time, we, we are able to determine or learn, I guess, the ratio between the water coming in and the wastewater discharged from individual premises.
That makes sense. Sorry, and second question, on a couple of these things here, there's no quantity, I suppose you call it, flow, is that per litre?
Yes. Per cubic metre, flow per cubic metre, yeah.
And then suspended solids is per?
So it's per kilogram.
Per kilogram, okay, be quite good if we just get that in the report.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And just a question, you're wanting compliance, are we, are you reasonably comfortable that you're getting compliance?
Yes, we are, yeah. Now, we have a very good relationship with, with our commercial partners, so, yeah. And where, where there are issues from time to time, and we do have issues from time to time, you know, they're, they're a production company, and every now and then they do have glitches, and we work with them around that, and mainly it's around education, we're not there, we're not there with a big stick. We really want to encourage that cleaner production. So the current bylaw has, has three categories to it, and we're proposing to go to a fourth category. And part of the opportunity here is to broaden our customer base, and so that we are picking up more premises, and that way more people are paying their fair share of the trade waste component. So it will improve our revenue, but it will also mean that some people aren't paying a, over the top, if you like, for a higher strength waste. They'll only be paying what, what they need to. So the four categories are allowed, no permits required, they're controlled where a permit is required, and those are restaurants, fast food restaurants, those kind of things, and where they have interceptors. And also, yeah, the wash base. So conditional where a permit is required, discharges for high flow or high loading above permitted discharge characteristics, which is basically above domestic strength, and puts extra pressure on the network and treatment plant processes. And then there's prohibited, and those are the ones where that may be discharging toxic chemicals or such a high strength waste that it is, has the potential to knock the treatment plant over. And for example, if we were to put a milk processing plant right next to Tamanga, and so the normal COD or, well, COD going in from a domestic wastewater is probably around 600. COD for milk is well over 100,000. So, so the amount of oxygen to neutralise that waste is, you know, orders of magnitude higher. So that's why we're measuring the, the strength of the waste and charging them according to that strength of waste, because it costs us to produce the, well, to use the energy to produce the oxygen to neutralise those, those high strength wastes. Excellent. So we have the proposed, proposed changes to our user fees, and with, really, it's just a 6.1% increase. And the reason we've gone for a 6.1% increase is that our overall trade waste, sorry, our overall wastewater fee for the domestic customer is going up by 6.1% from this year to next year. So we're proposing to just keep that at the same ratio. And the, the reason we're keeping the ratio the same is the, the ratio of trade waste that's generated to the, to the volume of domestic waste that's generated within the city is unlikely to change within that year either. So we, we feel that the 6.1% reflects both, both areas. In the interim, oh, yes, sorry, carry on. So I've already spoken to this, really. So the, the, the charges are made up to transmit that flow, so we obviously have to collect the flow from those residents, sorry, from those premises. Some of them have bigger pipes because they discharge more flow than what a commercial entity would, sorry, a residential property would. So they have a bigger pipe, some of them have dual discharges, so one is just for the, for the domestic, which is like their kitchen, their toilets, showers, you know, for a factory. And then they'll have another connection for the trade waste component that's discharged from, from the premise. And we're only dealing with the trade component. The other, the kitchen, shower and toilets, if you like, they just pay the normal domestic rate for. Yeah, so we are looking at an increase in revenue of, of roughly 6.1% at this point in time across those fees and charges. But we're also going to undertake a review from the bottom up of how we might structure our fees in, in the future. So at the moment, we're, we're charging for flow, COD and suspended solids. And the, there, there is an opportunity to, to increase the, the range of contaminants that we're charging for, and that would include nitrogen, and we're going to come back to you about that. But we're going to be doing some work around how we might structure nitrogen into those fees and charges, because we do treat for nitrogen at Tamanga. So if a trade waste premise is discharging to Tamanga, we're using probably 30, 35, 30, 35, 36% of the oxygen that is used at Tamanga is for nitrogen removal. So there's a real cost in nitrogen being discharged to our wastewater network that we have to neutralise. And we do that obviously with our domestic waste, and that's paid for in the domestic, but anything over and above domestic, we feel is a fair charge for industry. But we will, we will come back to you with those in the future, we're just going to do some work over the next few months around how that might look. And this is a rough break, sorry.
No, I was just, I was just trying to figure out, like, why was there a, whatever it is, 26% decrease in employee costs for this year and then a 38% increase next year? I'm just struggling to kind of see when I look at the, the revenue take and is it a reaction to the decrease in the revenue for the previous year or something?
I have to get back to you on that. Yes, I can see that, yes.
Incredibly big increase for FY27, and I'm just thinking, is that a, a number that didn't factor in the, you know, some cuts that were made in this, which looked to have been made in this financial year and, you know, because everything else, yeah, I, I'm interested.
It looks like just a 6.1% increase, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that and build it, we'll, we'll build that up from the base. Those are what's come out of our, our budget, but anyway, I'll get back to you on that, councillor, thank you for the, for the question. And this is just an indication of the, the cost of wastewater treatment, and you can see the activity is, is 58-odd million for the year. And we're recovering what's around one and a half million, so there's, we're certainly not over recovering when it comes to the, the recoveries that we get for the fees and charges for trade waste. And so, and the legislation only provides for cost recovery. So we think with, with the new fee structure is a bit more equitable than, than it's, by providing the user pays approach, it certainly drives good behaviours and the financial impact on smaller businesses. So, so we are looking at expanding our, our customer base, and that brings in some of those restaurants, fast food premises, that sort of thing. And really, all that they'll be paying for is us inspecting those premises to make sure that those grease traps and washdown facilities are maintained the way they should be to prevent fat sores and greases going into our wastewater network. Most of our dry weather overflows are from fat sores and greases. So that's one area of, of risk for us, that we would like to reduce that component. And the, the revenue, obviously, you can see is going to increase somewhat. Yes?
Very quick one, local water's done well, does this go with the new entity or does it stay with council, this sort of activity?
So the activity will go with the, with the water organisation, but the responsibility for providing a trade waste bylaw, my understanding is, it resides with the city council. So all that we would be doing is delivering that service under a service agreement with the city. That's my current understanding.
Can I ask two things? One is, can you send the slide that we don't have on the wastewater costs and things that you put up, the second to last slide? And the other question is, unless I missed something, you're talking about 6.1% overall increase, and I can see how some of that's why you've made decisions around certain things, like the, the officer fees versus the, you know, some of the other fees. But I'm just trying to understand, like, a 361% increase, you know, for that one component, could you just explain it? Because I think that's the kind of thing, if, if someone is hit by that, presumably they would be kind of going, that's a very big number in one year to have a 361% increase. And I have no idea why that's being looked at.
So there, there's two parts to that. The, we would like everyone to be into a three-year term, but some of them do not have the information around what their production's like and that, that kind of thing. So we would enter into a one-year agreement with them, do a lot of monitoring and understand what they're doing. They would, they would have a better view as well of what their production's like. And then hopefully, at the end of that, they'll be in a position to enter into a longer term agreement with us. But it just reflects some of the extra effort that's taken up with, for a single year.
So would, I guess my point with that is, would, do you think the average punter out there would, would go, no, that's fair enough because it's just a bit of cost recovery and you need to do that? Or do you think there could be pushback saying, actually, this is overly monitoring it, taking, extracting money from us to try and boost your revenue?
That could quite possibly happen, and when we go to consultation, we may get that feedback. That's it, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So there's just that, trade waste applications, new one-year term. What?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what's the difference between trade waste application, new one-year term? So there's, it's there twice, one's got a 9.9% decrease and the other's got a 360% increase. Oh, conditional. Okay, okay.
I suppose I didn't flesh it out, but I was, I was kind of meaning the inequities between, like, is a conditional one so much more important to have close monitoring than, and is that the argument for it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Thanks, Wally, just one quick question on the, on the industries that have a potential high contaminant percentage in their water, are we offering support around bunding and filtration systems that help to mitigate what enters our system? Are we giving them any sort of support or guidance that may put them into a different category or reduce their costs or reduce their industry's impact on our waters network?
Absolutely, and, and we have, the trade waste officers work very closely with industry. And a, a lot of it is, for example, if they do have high peak flows when they do a washdown at the end of the day, we may ask them to just, why don't you just put in a couple of big tanks, store that water and then let it go slowly, so they're not paying for that peak and having to upgrade the pipe network locally. So we work with them around not just cleaner production, but also smarter ways of reducing their cost. And if they do have some very nasty contaminants, well, we'll help them look at ways of removing that before they discharge. So, yeah, it's about educating and, you know, empowering them to, to have a good clean production with minimal impact on our networks.
And I think it's, I think a great presentation, well explained, and I think that, that culture, the way you explain that is exactly what we need to be doing across the table, so I think, great presentation, thanks.
Right, any other questions?
So the intention from here is to obviously bring it in a report and put it up alongside the, fees and charges alongside the annual plan.
Yep, thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation and, and presenting, that now ends the meeting, so I'll hand back to councillor Rolleston. Oh, oh, sorry, we've got, sorry. Yeah, I thought we were, I thought we were very good. Almost, almost got us some time back.
Kia ora koutou. Kia ora koutou, I can't hear myself, that's weird. Call, ask Steve Pearce, I'm the head of building services, and we're here to talk about user fees. Hopefully, we're as exciting as trade waste. Look, I, I want to take it back to why, why the building consent system works, because I think it's really important. I've heard a lot of talk about public good and private good, and we often forget that when you're looking about building consents, because people think it's just about, I want to build a house and therefore it's entirely private good. There, there's a massive public good part of the business that we, that we have responsible for. I often tell my team that we do stuff so that buildings don't fall over and squish people. So that's obviously a very important part, that you, you could walk into a building like this and you don't have to second guess, is the building going to fall over? If there's a fire, are you going to, got to get out of the building? No, it's fine, Steve. And so I think, I think that sort of trust and confidence is actually the game that building services is in. We, we are out there, people trust that when we've issued a CCC, that the building complies with the building code, that it's warm, dry, it's durable, and you're, you're safe in that building. And that's a really important part of, of this, part of the reason we have the regulation, but also part of the reason, you know, massive part of the economy that we have to, to take into account. There is a bunch of legislative changes in play at the moment, and I guess it'd be remissly not to touch on those briefly. The way that I see it, I don't envisage any of those playing significant sort of change in the, in the next financial years. Granny flats, by way of example, has been talked about a lot. We did some research in, in Tooronga, in the past three years, we consented six granny flats that might have otherwise been built without consent. And so even if it's, you know, an order of magnitude more than that, it's not a significant proportion of our work. And bearing in mind, even with the granny flats legislative change, there are still processes that they have to go through, working with my team to get approvals and bits and pieces. So it's, while there is a whole lot of legislative change in place to try and reduce the consenting burden on, on the general public, that's not a massive driver in our, in our fees and charges in the next couple of years. Just talking about what has happened in the past few years, because, you know, it's always good to look back before you go forward. Obviously, consent volumes have dramatically reduced over the past few years, but it does seem to have slowed. The optimist in me says that it feels like we're starting to go back up the other side, but I may have said that once or twice before, and I'm not going to do that in a public meeting. Complexity is increasing, however, and so that is another part to the, the equation, that we are seeing more townhouse developments, we are seeing more commercial developments than we have previously, and so while we are seeing fewer consents, the complexity is, is going up. The graph on the right there is, is one that we really do need to talk about, is that the consent timeliness has dramatically increased, and that's obviously been a very clear driver from yourselves and from the commissioners and from the minister, and from every man and his dog has asked us to do consents faster, and we've put a lot of time and effort into that over the past three years. And so that comes at a, at a, at a cost and, and an effort basis. And then the last point there, the accreditation is improving. So I understand that at some point prior to me, the Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment had started the process of revoking our accreditation to say, hey, look, you're not, you're not quite meeting all of the accreditation requirements. And we now just, we've just had our, our most recent IRN's assessment in September. We've had the, the best ever result that TCC has had in the past 20-odd years that the accreditation systems have been in place. But it's also amongst the best in the country, and so, not that there is a league table, but I have one, and, you know, we're, we're sitting pretty high up there. Okay, finance, so my budget at a, at a high level. Revenue is, is largely dominated by our user fees, so our building consent, building consent fees make up roughly 87% of the revenue that we, that we bring in. There is a small portion that is our compliance function that is charged for, so you may have, you know, pulled pool inspections, wing pool inspections. We have a building warrant, a fitness system that makes sure that commercial buildings are fit for purpose and all that sort of stuff. And so that brings in another 5%, and then the remainder, a measly 800 grand, I think it was last year, comes through from rate funding. So about 92-odd percent of our, of our business is funded through user fees. So it's obviously quite an important part of our, of our financial story. Expenditure is two-thirds is for staff and consultants, and at the end of the day, I don't buy much, I don't sell things, I, I'm a service business. But the remaining third is, is sort of operational costs to, to run the business. And so we've tried to illustrate this just by this, this graph here to show that, you know, the vast majority of my business is, is employee cost. There's a chunk of contractor which, as you can see, we've reduced, and we've talked about that previously. But then when you start having to pay for corporate allocations, those sorts of things are a part of running any business. There's also things like fleet, our, our cost of a car, to lease a car for our building to expect us to get out of site has doubled in the past couple of years. The cost of our insurance has gone up from 100K to 700K in the past three years. And so just the, the, the running a business part of, of being building services has dramatically increased. So now, sort of digging into the fees, in '22, we looked at the fees that we had on our, on our, on our schedule and compared ourselves with a bunch of other councils. At that point, I recall, you know, for example, one of our inspection fees looked ostensibly the same as our colleagues in other councils, only to realise that we were charging it per 45 minutes, and other councils were charging the same fee for 60 minutes. And so we're arguably 25% out. And so we sort of rationalised some of those fees to put us at the point where we are, or at that point, we were sort of the top quartile. So we were at the more expensive end of building consent authorities, but certainly not way massively above and beyond other councils. However, by a year later, you know, the, the volumes that we had seen in '22 were no longer there. And so our, our revenue was, was dipping pretty significantly. And so we agreed in the LTP that we would continue to put our fees up by 5% plus CPI for the next couple of years, three years, which would then get us to a point where we're breaking even again. So it was a, an acknowledgement at that point that we need to earn more money to be able to cover off the costs, but doing so in one fell swoop in a market that was dramatically dropping didn't seem like a good idea.
Just a question there, we often look at our revenue and costs, and you've done a comparison of what we're charging, which is good. Did you also do a comparison of what staff requirements are there per consent? Or are we to look at to say, are these the numbers in terms of the staff that you do need, the processes you're doing? Did you look at how efficient we might be versus anyone else in terms of why we're at that upper quartile? Or even knowing councils are probably across the country not the most efficient commercial entities in the world, are we, are we also looking at the, trying to understand why they are, that the costs are so high in the first place?
Yes, so we have, we have clearly looked at that, and one of the things that I'm part of, a bunch of networks, where building consent managers talk to one another and go, hey, what are you paying for this sort of person? How much, how many consents do they get out? And so while there isn't public information around a, you know, a comparison of it, it is certainly something that I've, I've done to play out, are we resourced comparably with our colleagues? Are we paying a, a similar salary to our colleagues? And we are, we are on par with it, I don't want to spoil the why just yet, because there is a slide on that in a second. But we are, we are on, on par with all of our colleagues in terms of both resourcing and But we are on par with all of our colleagues in terms of both resourcing and salary.
Thank you. And just in terms of the cost slides, really good, the breakdown, it would have been useful to have the approved annual plan as well, just to make sure we're going forward is still with the positive trends. Thank you.
Can I just follow, I had the same question as councillor Skoda. But I'm still a bit unclear. Is the surplus or deficit in the activity area, is it comparable across those councils? Has the trend been the same? You know, I guess that's really what's, because you could have the same pay rates, you could have the same charges. But the issue is, is it around volumes? Or is it around the built-in overheads and other costs which end up meaning we have a bigger deficit? And therefore the commissioners had to sort of crank up the charges again.
That is a question and a half. So I think in part of it, our overheads are on par with others. So again, we've done as part of that analysis to go proportionally, how much of your total expenditure is overhead? And we are roughly around about the same. We're at thirty-odd percent and most of them are at about the forty percent. So they may be charging more. I guess, I really don't want to spoiler it, but the reality is, and I guess it's the bottom bullet point there, is that we have a very small portion of our business that is rate funded compared to most BCA's in the country. So most councils rate fund their business to the tune of thirty-odd percent. I'm going to skip forward. If it allows me, there we go. So this is the comparison here and I guess that bottom row is the one that is probably the most stark difference between us and many of our peers. We are sitting at about eight percent rate funding, whereas most councils are, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty percent or thereabouts. There are some, I guess, anomalies to that trend and obviously those sort of stand out. Auckland, by way of example, they, one, it's very hard to compare anything with Auckland due to scale and all those sorts of things. But they also don't factor in the compliance activity that we do. Hamilton do manage to do theirs with no rate funding and that in part is a mystery to me. They are very much higher there.
And also they're three K cheaper and the volume is lower. So yeah, it's quite glaring, the performance when you look at all the others, they seem to stand out. So you can't put a finger on why.
Well, this is a public forum, so I won't surmise anything. No, the reality is they, Hamilton do stand out in many respects in the way that they, you know, if you go and look at these sort of figures across many of their businesses, they do run a slightly different financial system. And I don't know how that plays out and why that plays out. The key thing is they are different to just about every other council. We have a very close relationship with our colleagues at Hamilton and part of the reason we built that relationship is to go, if you've got the magic silver bullet, please do share, let us know what it is. And so there are things where we are moving towards the Hamilton way to try and reduce our costs, our expenditure. And at the end of the day, the cost to the user as well, because that's a key part to it. And in part why I've done that fee estimate for basic house consent on this comparison table is that's the very real cost to a new homeowner. The hourly rate is kind of an administrative feature rather than anything real. Let me just see where I was at too. I guess we've talked about that. Probably the key thing in this one is the LTP budget. We had budgeted for five percent increases per year for the last three years and we've done that. But obviously our volumes are significantly down and that is definitely driving the reason for the deficit. And then obviously that by being in deficit, we're also incurring interest, which makes it even harder. You know, it's the spiral. And so I'm absolutely incentivised to get beyond that deficit process and get back into surplus.
Can I just ask the obvious question, which is, because I've thought this before when you presented to us privately, that why the big built-in increase in volumes when it's different to the projected increase in the dwelling numbers and commercial consent numbers? It just seems a very nice aspirational goal, but it doesn't seem to be grounded in reality. What happened to lead to that number?
I don't want to be too flippant. In twenty-twenty-two, I was again very optimistic that we would get higher. At that point, the market seemed to be slowing, the drop in the market seemed to be slowing. Unfortunately, we proved to be wrong and I don't know that there are too many economists out there who predicted quite as long a reduction as there has been.
But wouldn't fifteen percent be like beyond past annual increments or not? Was that not the case?
Fifteen percent was what we were doing eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So that was the, in terms of increase, so we were seeing that rate of increase quite comfortably.
But over the decade, like when you average things out, I don't think there's anywhere near that, was it?
And so I think the challenge is you're talking about rate of increase rather than total numbers, right? And so that's why we factored in a rate of increase that was comparable with the other increases we'd seen in the decade. As I said, in retrospect, probably there's a reason I'm not an economist for ANZ. I didn't get that right and so that is in part my doing.
I would hope it wouldn't be all on your shoulders, I think there's a whole group of people who made the decision.
I don't think there's too much more to say on this slide other than I guess that top row is the standard hourly rate. And so we have staff that are support staff, for instance, who obviously charge somewhat less than that. And it currently is a hundred and forty-two an hour. But we also have more senior staff and so engineers are two hundred and eighty-nine an hour. If slash when I charge, it's three hundred and thirty-nine an hour. And so just to be clear that when I've put that row there, that's not every single person in my team charges that. It's depending on the nature of their role. Again, just looking at benchmarking ourselves and how others fund themselves. We are overwhelmingly more user fee funded than other councils. I guess that those graphs illustrate that. And so we get to options. I've put the magic number at the top there, three point five seven million is where I want to try and save that. That's what I need to try and find out of where I'm currently sitting. The first point there being to continue to drive increased cost recovery. And that comes largely out of kind of two things. One, identifying areas where we're not currently charging. So by way of example, most of my work I don't charge for. However, last week I sat in a meeting about a consent with an applicant at their request. And so I have now charged my time for that. And so I think that it's a direct cost of, for a consent applicant who is asking to see me rather than to see a processor or to see whatever. And so by trying to identify areas where we're not actually cost recovering currently and we should be, that's part of that. The other reality is I have staff, you know, forty, fifty odd staff who are charging time. And some are high performers and some aren't. And so part of that five percent is me being able to demand better performance out of my team. To my earlier points, we have put a whole lot of time and focus on getting consents out faster in the past few years. We haven't had a magnifying glass or whatever analogy you want to have on it around the timeframe and timesheeting of my team. It's been there, it's something we use to track in our business and make sure that they're doing their job. But I propose and I am already putting a much closer focus on that. And I'm reasonably confident that we can find effectively an extra million dollars there, an additional revenue that effectively our customers will pay. Because, you know, if John did this consent, I don't have any Johns. And he only charged five thousand dollars. But if Bob charged ten grand, then actually we should be lifting Johns to be the ten grand that the other person charged sort of thing. Two, three and four are variants on the same theme. They are, we increase the user fees. So the fourth one there at five percent plus CPI per year is effectively what we've been doing for the last few years. And so that would be ostensibly the status quo. Two is to increase, to get rid of that deficit immediately in the first year, based solely on increasing the user fees. And by way of comparison, that two hundred and forty-eight per hour would then become something in the region of three hundred and twenty-two an hour. And so my suggestion, the reason why I've not recommended it is I feel like that's a pretty significant increase and not something that we should be supporting, you know, to the industry. And my suggestion for what it's worth is that item three is that we need to split the difference and kind of go somewhere in the middle. And go, actually, we do need to keep increasing because we do need to try and reduce that deficit. And something like a ten percent increase is viable, but also it recognises that this is growth that needs to fund the cost of it. Because it is largely a private gain. The fifth bullet point there is, I talked before about our rate funding. So we, the policy basically says that we will rate fund parts of our compliance activity that aren't charged for. And in going through this presentation, preparing for it, we've realised that there are parts of our business that should be getting charged to that GL code, that aren't being charged to that GL code. And so we just need to go through and make sure that the things that the policy says are charged to the rate payer are charged to the rate payer. So that builders and homeowners trying to build a new house aren't paying for it. Six is about reducing expenditure. The option there could be that we back off on the timeliness and that we effectively de-resource. Again, it's been such a focus of the last three, four, five years, the conversations I've had with yourself, the conversations I've had with the ministry and minister. My suggestion is that that's not a great idea, but it is one option we could consider. And then I guess seven is around, if we can find some productivity out of, you know, getting more time recorded and being more efficient in our processes, that would allow us to reduce our contractors. Bearing in mind that our contractors are effectively an overflow volume game rather than a technical competency game.
So just on reduce expenditure, you have acknowledged you're talking to Hamilton to say, how do they do it for three thousand per home, per consent less? And not charge the rate payer anything? I've had a couple of examples where I think I had a thread of sixteen emails between TCC and somebody in Tooranga. Just, actually didn't get anywhere. It was just, oh, they're on holiday, oh, no, I haven't looked at this, I haven't looked at that. And ended up, it got too hard, so the person pulled out of doing something that might have been a fifty thousand dollar consent to Tooranga City Council because it just got too hard. So where in here is looking at process, understanding why things take so long? Those sort of things that we are hearing, I'm sorry, that, you know, continue to hear. They really need to be on how do you reduce expenditure? Because if you look at process and like genuinely look at process, then you can get better at time, you can get better at doing things, you can get better employee satisfaction because you solve things. And it's, I think, something that really should be on this slide. And I would like to understand how you're doing that and what that's looking like now and going forward.
Absolutely. I guess briefly, the Hamilton example, I can assure you that they have plenty of people who are grumpy about the communication too. And so I suspect that is part of our business that we do have to just deal with some of those things. The example you talked about isn't good enough and I would always be happy to hear about those examples so that I can try and do a root cause analysis. The reason I haven't necessarily put anything on here specifically about being more efficient is that's my day-to-day business. It is part of my assumption around how do I increase cost recovery? How do I reduce contractor expenditure is exactly that, by being more productive. What we have in place at the moment, so we have a continuous improvement system. It's a requirement by regulation, but also it's something that just makes good sense is that when staff, contractors, customers, anyone identifies an improvement, it's like the metaphorical suggestion box, it goes in there, we identify it, we track it and we make sure that we are actually following it through. I think from memory, at the last paper I presented to one of the committees, we talked about the number of continuous improvements we've done and how we do continue to move the ball on that. And in part, that's how we've increased that timeliness is by getting faster, better and all those sorts of things. An example was we changed our allocation day. So the mayor rightly challenged us and said, well, you currently allocate on day ten. If you allocate on day five, will that make things better? We investigated that, we followed it through, we locked in that as a new process. There was a small cost upfront because we had to resource the blip in between. But now we allocate on day five or earlier to try and keep that timeliness going.
And I guess maybe internal, looking at your systems rather than the mayor suggesting is probably better examples of utilising your expertise.
And I think just to provide some context as well, across our whole regulatory business, we've been working with all of the heads to set some expectations around customer service and making it easy to deal with TCC. And that's been in place for a couple of years. And I know these things can take time, but it's certainly something really hard to measure, except for satisfaction surveys, which we've got some data on and we've presented on before. But it's certainly been one of our key focus areas for the last couple of years is improving our customer service and being really easy to deal with.
Could I just, just further to that, I mean, the book time with me, stuff that we have on our website. So that any person, the people you were talking about, can go onto our website and book a thirty-minute time with my staff directly via a Teams meeting. My team don't have any veto rights, they can't say no and it just automatically turns up. And so that was a continuous improvement that was raised by staff. That means that we're able to communicate better. I promise you, there are literally, I think it was a hundred, we closed out last year. It's a really important part of my business.
Steve, you've got the actual numbers from twenty-two to twenty-five financial years and then the annual plan budget. And the annual plan shows we're sort of break even in this activity. But then we're forecasting a very significant deficit in twenty-seven, like the next year. And I'm thinking, is it that something changes between those years? Or is it that we're wrong in our current estimate for the current period of financial year twenty-six? Because we sort of had, for anyone listening, who might be listening, four point four million dollar deficits. So it goes, you know, two point eight, three point three, four point four, and then we break even and then we suddenly go back to three point six. And I'm thinking, the old one out seems to be this current year.
You're looking at the annual plan column?
Looking at what you presented to us, well, what we've got now, slides, on slide, or page twenty-three of our Stella.
Sorry, the right-hand column there, the annual plan column?
Oh, yes, you're sorry, yeah, 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 sorry, I didn't see that.
Absolutely. So the left-hand columns are actuals, the annual plan is where we were supposed to be, we're not going to achieve that.
So do you have an estimate now based on, I know we can't predict what happens in the future, but based on the current volumes, doing, are we talking about around that three, four, so deficit for this year?
That's what we're forecasting, yeah.
Okay, that's the missing piece, thank you.
So again, this table I saw as a summary of the options. What I'm particularly keen to get your guidance on is, one, I've heard loud and clear that increased cost recovery, productivity, efficiency is a clear driver. And we will, I absolutely am committing to doing that and I will continue to do so. I would be interested to hear your opinion on the two, three and four about whether we increase the fee significantly, status quo or somewhere in between. And I guess any other thoughts on this particular user fees setting?
Quite comfortable with your kind of recommendations there, is my personal view.
And in terms of customer satisfaction, I suppose, whatever the metric you're using, you're talking about it. Obviously you've got significantly improved timeliness, which is one thing we'd heard has been a potential challenge for the community developers. But then we're also towards that top end of the costs. developers. But then we're also towards that top end of the costs. So you're looking at increasing, where, where does that sit in terms of feedback you get in terms of what level, what type of job we're doing first?
It's fair to say fees is often a conversation starter. And I think one of the, one of the other idiosyncrasies about the way Toronga City Council works is that we also charge our development contributions on a building consent fee. So when you obtain a building consent for a new house, you often see a, a large invoice. And how is your invoice sixty thousand dollars, Steve? The development contributions is a large chunk of that. So I do caution, a word of caution there if you're hearing from customers that our, our fees are significantly different. But obviously, you know, at a ten grand fee for a building consent, that, that's not insignificant. At eight hundred K to build a house, it is, it is a small portion of, of the building. And I guess to the earlier point that I made around public good, if you are effectively getting insurance for your house, that means that you know it is compliant, you know that you can get it insured, you know that you can get lending for it, and actually you can go and sell it at a, you know, at a profit in the future. That is, that is part of the benefit that you get for the, the fee. In terms of our customer satisfaction, we, we have, we do track and we have tracked it for a number of years. And it is, it is ninety-odd percent good. And I think one of the things that I, I do struggle with is that we have a, a few really vocal folk who are, who have had really bad situations. And so, you know, the, the ones that I know where I've had to work through, you know, email trails with sixteen backwards and forwards are just not good enough. And those are the sorts of things. And I like to think that they are, they are the minority.
Thank you for that. And so would you expect that timeliness to continue? Like, you know, so how much, so we're late eighties at the moment. So getting up over ninety percent or whatever, whatever the number one is, which we, it might be out there. And then obviously if that's, that will help drive customer satisfaction, I suppose, and acceptance to an degree of increased costs. So with the increased costs, we still expecting to improve that service level?
Absolutely. And I'm pleased to say that our, we've broken the ninety percent mark. And so we're now in the nineties, we're no longer in the eighties. And seeing the most recent numbers, that is increasing as well. I, I do envisage that it will, it will keep going. People will, people will be happier about it. The, the reality is at this time in the market, the building industry is probably on a knife edge. And so while we are infinitely faster than we were, than we were three years ago, we are marginally more expensive than we were three years ago, the interactions we have with the industry does tend to be a little bit more fractious because people are, you know, businesses are going bust and that sort of thing. And so that is in part why I've said increasing fees significantly just isn't a sensible move at this time of the market. You know, if we lost another building company and that was one less house in, in the city, that's a bad outcome. I had two other changes. If I could quickly steal two seconds of your time. Online service fee, I think this one is a no-brainer. We pay a subscription to use a software. We pass that on on full and I intend on continuing to do so unless given any other direction. And the second part is that we, we currently don't have the ability to charge a deposit prior to receiving a building consent application. So all we do is we charge at the end of an application. And what this means is we have some recidivist non-payers who put an application and it gets refused. They don't pay for it. They put another application, it gets refused, they don't pay for it. What I'm proposing here is that we bring in a deposit, which is optional, based on if we believe that there might be a non-payment, to, to try and circumvent that process. At the end of the day, we have something like five or six hundred thousand dollars of bad debt that we are actively chasing to try and, to try and reduce. And I believe this would reduce that easier. Yep.
Why would you do it optional?
So the administration to do a deposit on two and a half thousand or two thousand consents every, and then refund at the end, or it just becomes, becomes too costly.
And it wouldn't become more costly saying that you're going to charge Steve but not Rick a deposit?
I don't think so. That's my guess.
We'll leave that to you.
Everyone comfortable with those recommendations? Yeah?
A question, a general question. I understand government is looking at potentially rationalizing BCA's. Is there any update with that sort of potential?
So the government have announced that they are going to introduce law early in the new year. And the latest I've heard is that that will include voluntary consolidation. And effectively it's removing the barriers from that. It doesn't come with a, a direction or a push. It simply comes with a, if you're, if you're keen to do it, we will take away the legislative burden that, that makes that impossible.
Can you provide us with the, presumably the, the rate payers pick up the deficit because it's not coming from user fees. So it has to go somewhere because the, the OpX is greater than the, than the OpRev, right?
It's, it's a cash balance activity. So whatever the deficit is at the end of the year, it gets debt funded, gets ring fenced, and then the interest gets charged the following year, based on whatever the closing debt balance is. And at some point, we need to sort of factor in the repayment of that debt as well.
That's what I mean. Like, I'd like to know.
It's not rates funded. It will be more user fee funded.
Well, will it? That's the question. Because that.
Depending on how we, depending on how we structure the pricing strategy.
Exactly. So I guess I'd like a bit more detail on those options before I agree to this. Because, because to me, the answer is the DCs. Because that's like, I would rather crank up the price here to reflect reality while at the same time putting large pressure downwards in terms of the expenditure, crossing fingers that you get the right volumes, that you predict the right volumes and that levels it out. But at the same time, acknowledge that we've got a major affordable housing or lack of affordable housing. And the bigger issue by far, as you said, is, is the DCs. And I am supportive and have said so before of changing our DC's approach. And that's been shunted forward and shunted forward. And I think we're dealing with that in the, in the LTP now. And I think we're, we're creating problems that we should be addressing. And this has been known to Toronga City Council for, well, the Western Bay mayors have consistently, not the current one, but consistently called that out. The public have called it out, previous councils have called it out, but we've done nothing on it. And I think this is kind of tinkering around with something which is just going to add ultimately, in my view, to rate paid debt based on the approach taken by Toronga City Council in the past. Unless we proactively change that, it will float, the debt cost will eventually be incurred to some extent by the rate payers. And I would rather go, let's look at this a bit more deeply and figure out what the big picture is here. Because the end game should be to get the most efficient and affordable houses and other dwellings and commercial buildings.
And I think councillor Crowther, they are bigger issues that we need to address and that we'll need to address. I think coming back with some information just on building consensus isn't the whole picture here. Yeah. So completely take your point. And that's something that we will have to do with councillors. Yeah.
Right. Aware of time. So thank you very much for that presentation. Hopefully got a bit of a steer of, of where we're going. But yeah, thanks for those recommendations. I'll now hand to councillor Rollison if he could just give us a closing karakia.
Thank you, mayor. Kia noitata, ake atou, kea tatu katoa te atu faia oto tataa riki aikraetei me te arua te atua me te fii tahi tangaki te wairoa tapu. Ake, ake, amen.
Thank you for that. Now declare the meeting closed at eleven eighteen and we'll see you back.